All right, so we'll get started, I'm sure, I hope other folks will wander in. So, welcome to Coffee Talk 4.0. A few thank you's before we get started. Evy, she's not here, but thank you for the use of your building. We have a few folks, and I'm not sure if you know, this is our interim fire chief, Mr. Clark, Ken Clark. So, he's here to answer any questions. We have Tom Galvin in the back, I saw our Highway guy. Dave, he's in the back too, thank you for coming. Dave's not here. Dave's not here. We have the usual suspects, our town administrator, Margaret, and then you know Lisa, Chris, and myself on the peg. So, what we'll do is that we're gonna open it up. We have a list of updates for you, but instead of going through that first, we wanna hear the questions that you guys have. Maybe it will coincide with some of the items that we have. Between the three of us, we'll take notes, find out what's going on, and then as time allows, we will go down on some of the items that have come up in the past that we will give you an update on. So, with that, I open the floor to Coffee Talk 4.0. What's on your mind? Nothing. Awesome. Hang on. Go ahead. Can you introduce yourself, so for the people on the playback that'll be watching this will know who's chatting? Oh, there you go. Oh, by the way, your voice and image may be recorded, so there you go. Okay.
Susan Rigera, Randall Road. I just wanna know what's being done to alleviate some of the traffic at 7, 8, 9, and 4, 5, and 6 at night. I can't get out, if I come down Highland Street, I can't get out in traffic. I have to wait five or 10 minutes just to pull out. I know we have to petition the state, I guess, to ask them for traffic light. Are there any other solutions? Other than getting out of the car and stopping all the traffic?
Not only soon, have you like picked off three days, so thank you for that. So, Chief Galvin?
Yeah, we actually, we have some pretty big updates on traffic and things that are going on. So, it's well beyond 4, 5, 6, it's 24 hours a day. And weekends, it's terrible. I mean, I think we all see it, and we all know it, it's one of the biggest complaints that I get. There's several programs that we're working on. There was actually an ask from the Board of Selectmen to find out if the state could help us. So, we started there several months ago. Actually, Dave and I and Tim Wheeler met at the District 3 office in Worcester to find out what is being done and what can be done, because I know a lot of you probably noticed a lot of our problems stem from 495 and the interchange at 495 and 290. That people, the traffic gets backed up there all the way to 117, and then people start to get off at 26, and they're cutting through Sawyer Hill Road, Gates Pond Road, Pleasant Street, and South Street. And that causes a lot of problems. So, what we can report is, we had another meeting just recently with the state, and they are making some immediate changes to that interchange, which is unheard of for the state. When we had the first meeting, they told us, yeah, 12 to 24 months, we're gonna make some changes, you're gonna see improvement. Yeah, I don't know how you felt, Dave, when we left, but they said it, I didn't truly believe it.
Which interchange do you speak to with?
So, from 495 south on 290 west. So, really, the real problem interchange at that, there. So, we were presented, as Margaret and I were at a meeting, they presented us the plans, and they've actually already started working, so you might see them out there at night. The way the traffic flows on the 290 and 495 south now, there's about a 200-foot queue lane. We end up with a backup sometimes of about two miles. So, it doesn't work, it doesn't fill, probably. They are immediately extending that queue lane to 1,500 feet. So, that's gonna alleviate a little bit of the problem. But the major problem there arises, because those of you that have driven it, it's three turns. It's right, back a little bit left, and then right again. So, tractor trailers are slowing down to 20 miles an hour, ones that are really heavily loaded are slowing way down. The state, it will be going out to bid in the spring to redesign that ramp. It's gonna be two lanes, and it's gonna be designed, the tractor trailer, to maintain a speed of 40 miles an hour. Based on the projections they've done, that should virtually eliminate all of that backup queue, which should then pull a lot of the traffic off of Route 62. So, especially at the commute hours, it should start to free up some of our problems. So, then, now what do we do next? So, there's a few programs that we are involved in. There's a Complete Streets program, a lot of that is focusing on pedestrian safety and designs on the roadways. Tim Wheeler spearheaded that in the planning board. So, we're well into that program, and we've outlined 32 projects to be designed and to move forward on. The program's gonna be funded. There's a program that coincides with that, which is called Safe Routes to School, which presents us some funding. And then there's a third program that we are not yet a part of, which is going to be the biggest thing. It's called the TIP, it's the Transportation Improvement Program. So, that's where we can get state funding to do some of the major redesigns, when we talk about traffic lights and things like that. Unfortunately for that, there's a couple things that now need to happen. We need to identify the problems, which we've started to do, and we're meeting. We have to get onto the TIP, get onto the program. Unfortunately, with that program, they already have projects lined up until 2026. So, it's pushed way out. Now, these projects, when we start to talk about traffic lights, major roadway improvements, we look at the Five Corners intersection, they're expensive. So, in order for us to get the funding through the TIP, there has to be a local commitment. So, we actually have to come up with 25% of design and project funding. So, that's where we're gonna actually start to come back to you, and come back to the town at town meeting, to start to put some money aside for these projects. Because in order for us to do the work, we're gonna have to spend some money. So, it's gonna be some long-term planning, we've already started it. So, be prepared. I don't know what we're gonna do this year at town meeting, if it's gonna be this year at town meeting, it's gonna be next year at town meeting, to start to see some monies to be put aside for funding, to do the design and planning of these projects, so then we can go after those larger sums of money from the state. Nothing immediate, unfortunately, but hopefully within the 24 months, once the state puts their project out to bid for the 290, 495 redesign, they should start working about September of next year on the actual construction at the ramp. Get the ramp done relatively quickly, I mean, for a state project, 24 months is unheard of. And we should see, start to see some improvements locally. And then, what we'll be able to do there, in the discussions we had with the transportation officials, is do a Route 62 traffic study, and see after they've pulled some of that traffic off of Route 62, then what our needs would come. It unfortunately takes a lot of time, we don't have an easy answer, but, you know, we're having those conversations now, we recognize the problems, and we're doing what we can to rectify it.
Chief, are there projects in the state pipeline to put traffic lights on 117 at Route 70, and Route 70 and?
So, what's being done at Route 70? I don't know anything on those intersections.
You don't? Cause I heard that they were addressing that.
So, there's some work being done immediately right now in Bolton on 117. That's a town project for Bolton, but what the state is doing, a lot of those small projects, we don't get direct communication on.
Right.
We've been getting a lot of information about the 495, 90 interchange, but sometimes some of the smaller local projects, we don't get all the information, unfortunately.
That's right. Keep asking. Thanks.
I just wanna touch on a couple of things, or add to a couple of things the chief said. On the Complete Streets program, the next round of funding is gonna be coming up in May. So, we actually are looking at some projects closer to the center of town to be able to start working on. As chief said, a lot of Complete Streets has to do with pedestrian safety, sidewalks, things like that, but that would tie into road safety and traffic congestion. That Complete Streets, once we start identifying, the chief said we have, what, 34 projects?
Yeah, 31, 32.
There are several, but many of them are bundled in the center of town. So, when we looked at the transportation, when we started looking at the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP that's run through the Worcester region, we started to think about addressing the entire center of town, everything from Pleasant Street to Five Corners, and start looking at that as a big picture. That TIP project would be a multimillion dollar project. So, to the chief's point about design engineering, the TIP, MassDOT requires the town to fund 25% in order to show the town's commitment to getting a project done. So, we do have to start programmatically funding design engineering for the big projects, or we may find ourselves slipping year after year after year and not getting?
Down the list.
Down the list, exactly.
So, follow-up question to that, and this is related to a specific street. I travel Sawyer Hill Road a lot from my house in South Berlin to get to Highland Commons and parts east, because I can't get out ahead of Pleasant Street. So, I find repeatedly, people are meandering along Sawyer Hill on the wrong side of the road, cause they don't seem to realize that it's not a cow cap, it's actually a street.
It's tough, and it's on par, there are tough decisions.
I don't have a problem driving, I stay on my own side of the road, but I?
You know what? If everyone didn't have a problem, it would make our lives a lot easier.
Barely white-knuckled, and they're sure they're gonna hit the trees?
Yeah.
In the middle of the road. Yeah.
Part of these things should probably be yellow lines down every road to remind them.
Then you couldn't pass the ones that are going, you know, 15 miles an hour down the hill.
So, before we take our next question, I wanna remind everybody, there's coffee. Thank you, Mary. There's water, and homemade cookies. Thank you, Willie Poland. They've, I've had them both, and if no one wants them, I'm taking them home. All right, so, Mr. Paul, what up?
Following up Carter Street, relative to the Complete Streets, how does that design occur, and who participates in it?
So, what we started with, I guess when we started looking at the projects, it was spearheaded by the planning board. So, Tim was on that. So, it started out with Tim, myself, started with Keith, actually, when he was with Highway. Now, it's Dave. So, I guess when we start to look at the design and actual, what the projects are gonna look like, it will be that group. I don't know what we would do for community outreach, I'm sure there's gonna have to be some community outreach, and we're gonna have to find an engineering firm, a design firm, to start doing the work and look at it. So, some of the things we looked at with Complete Streets, a lot of it is really looking at this area, and what these roadways should look like. Should we, you know, to increase pedestrian safety, do we make one of these roads a one-way? Do we do some other different things, which would then maybe require some, you know, be able to add real sidewalks through all of Carterville? Do some other things to kinda make it more pedestrian safety, to link the library really to the school with good sidewalks and crosswalks.
So, a sidewalk down Pleasant Street would be wonderful, let me know how much of my front lawn you would like.
And kinda what we looked at, because that's really difficult, and that's a great point
to take up. Not everyone's gonna be that accommodating, or wanna be that accommodating, say, take my front lawn, go to sidewalking. So, what we actually looked at, when we started to look at these Complete Streets and these plans, was to look at some of the existing trails and paths, and some of the conservation lands that have trails, where we could put sidewalks that could connect a conservation area, that may come out on another end, then we could put another sidewalk, so that we might not be taking, you know, having to go and take large swaths of land from people, cause people don't like that. But still be able to connect things with, you know, sidewalks and walking paths, so a combination of efforts.
So, by and large, we as a town is gonna be responsible for creating the blueprint for what we want to have happen.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We would just say?
The state isn't gonna come in and override or?
No. There's certain standards and things that we have to meet in terms of the width of the sidewalks. When we start to do road projects and take state money adding bike lanes and all sorts of things, there's different parameters we have to meet, but we still have control about overall how it looks and what it looks like. You know, we wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't come in if we were gonna do, say, a light project at Pleasant Street, and make us put, you know, lights that fit in a city and not a country environment, cause everything looks timed.
And I could just add to that too, I just wanna be clear with design engineering. Complete Streets is another program that's competitive, it's competitive funding available to each municipality, but the town is responsible for 100% of the funding of engineering and design work that would lead to construction under the Complete Streets program. So, that's just another program that we would need to start thinking about, design engineering work.
Margaret, what do you estimate that cost to be?
It depends on the cost, it depends on the cost of the project itself. So, if you figure that engineering's gonna be, Dave, you could probably say 10 to 15% of the entire project cost, or?
We're talking on Complete Streets, sir?
Any of those projects?
If we're looking at TIP funding, it's 25%, so it's a million dollar project, it's worth $50,000 the town has to come up with, which is substantial money to town.
But didn't you say the engineering is 100%?
For Complete Streets, we would have to come up with 100% of the engineering.
And what do you estimate that to be?
Again, that depends on the project size. So, you have to look at the projects, you know, what the engineering costs are gonna be, and there are 34 different projects on the Complete Streets plan. And to be clear, on the TIP, we need to come up with 25% of the engineering cost just to get on the TIP. Then we need to continue to fund 100% of the engineering for the entire TIP project. Okay? So, I just wanna make sure we're clear. Both TIP and Complete Streets require the town to fund the engineering design work. The Safe Routes to Schools program that the chief referenced a little while ago, that is the only one of those three programs that the state would actually pick up the engineering design cost as well as the construction cost. So, if you, if we were to look at bundling a few Complete Streets projects, I think you're probably looking at $100,000 plus for engineering, to look at some of the downtown projects we have in the Complete Streets plan. You're welcome. I think we, I don't know for sure that we have the Complete Streets plan up on the website, but I'll try to make sure that we have that up there, so people know what projects are outlined.
Carol?
Carol, while all this is great, it doesn't really address the immediate need or point that Sue, I think, was trying to make, you know, early in the morning, trying to get out on the side roads, whether it be at Pleasant Street, South Street, up at Five Corners. One of the things that just came to my mind was to use, Dexter, use a little blinky sign that says, be kind to your neighbor and let them out. Something as simple, because we all wait. We all wait for someone to get by.
Awesome, you should have a blinky sign. Dave, we emailed, you've looked at that, I'd say. Well, I also signed your mind, we have a list, but I don't wanna go down, I'll send that to you first.
Well, I just wanted to say that I posted on Facebook pictures of the ongoing River Bridge House, you know, building construction project. So, if anyone hasn't been down there, wants to have a look at it, I put, you know, three or four pictures up on my Facebook page. I will put them on the Berlin Residents United and Berlin Mass Neighbors Connect, I just haven't done it yet, sorry. But I'll be doing that.
Question in the back.
I have a question, who's saying that? I live on, I live at Dave's house, too. I have a question about who owns my front yard? How much of my front yard is owned by the town? How much of it is owned by me? And then, what happens with the dead oak trees that are going like this over the power lines? I called the utility company back in the summer, and said, can you come look at this? And they came looking, and said, yeah, those are dead oak trees. No, our responsibility, you gotta talk to the town about that. And they're, some of them are literally, the power lines here, and the oak trees like that, and the gypsy moss is picking up. And I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm not supposed to take them down. And I'm also a little unclear on where my front yard ends and where the town begins, because they come around, a few, maybe a month ago, and they buzz down everything in the front house. So, if you happen to have planted anything out there, it's not there anymore.
So, the road width varies. Road to road, even sections of road, most of them are 40 feet.
What about if you have a stone wall in your, who owns that stone wall?
Good question. There's really no definitive survey done in town. So, basically, and I'll be honest with you, it's a guessing task. We use the center of the road and measure out each weight to whatever.
Do you remember that, on this road, it's this many feet from the center, on that road, it's that many?
We have those numbers, but they vary, every road varies, and even a section of road, it could change 100 feet up the road, it may go from 40 feet to 30 feet, it may go to 60 feet. They're all variable, there's not a, there's no standard in town.
From the center line?
From the center line.
What about the dead trees?
Depends on where they lie. Depends on where they lie.
Well, they're over the power lines. One of them is literally, you know, that far from the power line.
Public shade tree has to be within the layout of the road. So, if it's outside the way of the road, it's not a town tree, the town isn't responsible for it.
Layout of the, I'm sorry, layout of the road counting, is it?
The base of the tree.
The base of the tree has to be in the road.
With the town layout.
Oh, in the town layout, okay, within that unknown?
If it's 40 feet in front of your house, it has to be within that 20 feet from the center of the road to your property.
Okay. I mean, I just don't wanna lose power in the middle of the winter, when the storm takes the branches down.
Do I fully?
And I don't think you want me out there with my chainsaw trying to take them down.
Two or three, I can't stop you.
I mean, this is, we've had a lot of discussions on this, the town doesn't own a butter truck. So, in order for these trees to come down, it has to be contracted. You know, Highway's working under a limited budget, so there's a lot of issues when it comes to trees. We've had lots of discussion about this.
So, there's probably 800-plus dead trees that are within the town layout right now that need to be removed.
And how many days does the bucket truck go down?
So, a new bucket truck and a new chipper is roughly $300,000.
What do you have in your budget for contracting tree work?
We have $10,000. It gets these six days for a contract. We could do about six trees a day.
Do you see the problem?
No, I can see the problem, I'm just wondering what? Cause the solution is, if the alternative is, if the power goes out?
The long-term solution is to come up with something with a bucket truck, and you know, one of the things that doesn't work with that is to potentially rationalize it to someone else, so that we don't have to do the whole amount for the bucket truck. So, that is an avenue we're looking at, but it's not an immediate solution.
And utilities, like, we got nothing to do with it, we wash our neighbors?
So, if it's 20 feet away from the line, or it's off the line, or the side of the line, it's okay?
No, it's literally, I mean, it's like, this is a tall oak tree, and, you know, like, this is the road, and the oak tree's like this, and the power line's right there, and the oak tree's dead.
Yeah, the utilities have a maintenance plan, and they hire contractors. So, a couple years ago, they came through town, did a bunch of trimming, so now we're kinda not on the schedule. And they, you know, they keep going, do the whole routes, and they come back again, and they bring it. But depending upon the size of the trees, the location of the trees, you know, you'll notice you go through some communities, and it looks like the power lines are going through this, and necessarily don't clear everything. They get up there, and they trim what's getting close, but they don't cut it all. And, Todd, cause I truly don't think we want them to cut it all. I think we've gone through some of those communities where, you know, 40 feet back from all the power lines, there's nothing. You know, there's something to be said for it, but it's finding a balance, and if the town has some more ability to do it, we don't like trees coming down in the middle of the alley, and it causes a lot of problems for all of us in public safety as well, so.
So, just an interesting point, the scary is those dead trees look. Most of the time, they're not a hazard. Last week's windstorm, all the trees that came down, took the power lines down, and all lied, leave out trees, there weren't dead trees.
All right, one of the, I'll pop in here, is I'm very big on community involvement. So, I would like to thank Liz Ford, who's sitting at the table coloring. There she is, in the green. So, it was a combination, I'm sure you've probably seen, if you have kids that go to Berlin Memorial, they went home with a flyer talking about Halloween, I think we called it Halloween Fest, or Halloween in Berlin. The furthest coming Sunday. So, that was really a joint effort, and it just started with an email from myself to Julie Lee, who's on rec, to say, hey, what do you think? Can we do a Halloween parade? And from there, it kind of lost, and Liz got involved, and Tammy Money got involved, and our Council on Aging Director got involved. So, I know that with community involvement, it's usually the same people that put their hand up over and over again. So, I would like to thank you, Liz, because Liz was extremely instrumental in the Easter egg hunt as well. Believe me, I'll be tapping her to come up with something for Christmas too, so don't go too far.
I actually was gonna ask, what is the Christmas in Berlin?
I heard the Berlin Lions is sponsoring it. What they're doing, I don't know. So, it's gonna take a joint effort again to see, to what's going on, when it's going on. I know I've been asked to emcee some of it, which could be really funny, wait till you see the costume I'm gonna show up in. What? We're already planning it, so you know that it's gonna be a good one, just saying. So, we'll have to see. I don't know what's planned for an event, for that, but the Lions were kind enough about a month ago to put up a note on the big white sign in the center of town for volunteer communities. I know Mary's pushed stuff out on Town of Berlin, I've pushed stuff out on Berlin Neighbors Connect. There's a lot of stuff to do, and I know that everybody is busy. And for those who are volunteering, thank you very much to do that. But as we talk about more things that we want to do for the town, we're gonna need your help. One of the items that I came up with, it was an article in The Item, I steal a lot of my ideas from The Item, was pickleball. It's huge around our neighboring towns, it's, you know, low impact, it's for people of all ages. Could do something down at the tennis courts, we could do something at one of the gyms. So, I'm just trying to get ideas out there, and get ideas from you. I was down at the, where were we on Sunday?
Oh, Turner Hall.
We were at Turner Hall, and I was talking to some folks, and they have pitch leagues, and they have cribbage leagues, and I'm like, I wonder if we could do a pitch league or a cribbage league down here. So, it's those types of ideas. So, if you have anything like that, email me. You know, I'm happy to take on the extra work, because, you know, it is, it's for our town, it's for our community. These are the things that, you know, Janet and I did growing up here in town along with others. So, if we can kinda continue that tradition, you know, like we're trying to do with the Easter egg hunt, bring that back with Halloween, do something for the kids, you know, thank you to the Sawyer Hill people who offer up, you know, their village on, I almost said Thanksgiving night, on Halloween night, you know, for the kids to go up and trick-or-treat up there, and for the Lions Club who's putting a dance together. So, the more people that we can get out there to give just a little bit of time, then the effort is not that large. So, I ask you to think about it for that. All right. Oh, yes, we did, we mentioned Sunday. So, on Sunday, we're going to have a scarecrow contest, so thank you, Highway Dave, he's gonna go down and erect some poles down there, and kids are gonna bring their scarecrows that they've already stuffed, and there'll be a little voting going on for that. And then, Lisa, Chris, and I, and Margaret, we're going to vote on the best decorated pumpkin from the little kids, and we're gonna make them selectmen for the night on Monday. So, give them a little certificate for that, we'll put them at the big table, turn the camera on them, let them open up the meeting for that. Margaret will take them through, hopefully she won't be too tough on them, trying to get them to deliberate. But, you know, we'll get them, we'll get them in and out, you know, and home by 7:00. So, again, it's, that stuff, it's low cost, it's almost no cost. You know, and we're hoping that the kids, and especially the parents, will take a little bit of pride in that as well, so to become selectmen for the day. All right. Library, I know that's near and dear to everyone's heart. Margaret, do you wanna give an update on where we are and down?
I can give an update on the library septic system. We were, this town was extremely fortunate to have one of its own residents, who happens to be an assistant health director in the town of Acton, step forward to volunteer to serve as the project manager for the library septic construction project. That's, that work alone, being the, being the design engineer on the system, and the project manager, would cost the town likely thousands of dollars. And so, we actually have a meeting with him tomorrow, we're gonna have the Board of Health present, we're gonna have the library director present, a board member will be present, and we're all gonna go over, his name is Evan Carloni, I hope he doesn't mind me mentioning his name, but we're gonna go over with him the options for the septic system at the library. And it sounds, it sounds to us like he does have some options, which is a very good thing. Most of you may know that DEP put a timeline on septic system replacement to expire in May of 2020. So, at this point, the Board of Health Chair has informed me, we have a small window of time, we just need to keep this moving. And once we know what our options are as far as septic system, we'll be able to do an invitation for bids and start working on construction. So, I know, I know, I'm very thankful on behalf of the town for Evan to have stepped up to do this work. So, we'll hear more tomorrow, we'll keep everybody posted.
Is that an open meeting?
It's not an open meeting, because it's not a meeting of the board or committee, but we can certainly provide updates at the board's meeting next Monday.
All right, thank you. I see a hand.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that. Charlene DeCaligero, Village Court, and Chair of the Library Trustees. So I plan to come to the meeting tomorrow morning. You said something about a deadline in May, Mike?
May 2020, isn't that a...
I believe our deadline is September 5th, 2020.
Well, then that is so much better.
I would be sweating a lot harder if it was May, so...
Well, we'll be talking about that tomorrow morning.
Great, great.
Can I just return to the tip money and the engineering for road changes? I wondered, as everyone was talking, I was wondering if we couldn't somehow advertise for some benevolent engineering firm that would want to make, you know, the roads better in a small rural town and keep our character, that we do the project for the, you know, the feather in their cap, with what we did.
If there is somebody... Oh, this meeting is televised. If there is somebody else... We would love to talk with you.
We'd love to talk.
Yeah, and we're happy to talk with anyone who might be willing to do that. I'm not familiar enough with civil engineers in this area to...
Well, what came to my mind was if we did one of those signs with a thermometer that showed, you know, "Improve our roads project, and this is the goal, and it's gonna be, you know, 2.5 million, and here's where we are with our money." And maybe just if we stick that on the front lawn of the, you know, the church, maybe enough people driving by, and somebody would go, "What is that project? Maybe you'd wanna be involved in that."
Well, we could also have a bake sale, so can you give them a knowing? You got it?
So the "Improve Our Roads" campaign.
Yeah, why not? Why not put a sign out there?
I also hope that our administrative finance team is going to be able to come up with recommendations on programmatic funding for the engineering design work. So we'll look at various funding sources to see if the town can actually start working to...
Building a fund.
Consist of the building of funds and making it available over the course of the next several years.
Yes, Ms. Sue?
Karen from Linden Road.
Street.
It's Linden Street. Well, we lived there for 10 years. I just have a request. I was wondering, is there any way that we could encourage boards, committees, the whole group of commissions, to present a more detailed agenda? It's a little disappointing when you watch it on YouTube afterwards and realize something's being voted on that affects you personally. You know, your home, your budget.
I second that idea.
Just something where they're gonna vote on something, and you have no idea it's even gonna be voted on.
We did get a speech, I think it was last year, the Department Head Meetings, encouraging all the groups to build a better agenda, and please provide minutes.
Yeah, we'd just, I would like to see it encouraged and possibly better.
So that ties into the open meeting law?
That's right.
Yeah, and so... Yeah, and so I'll see if I can work with Eloise to do an informational thing for boards and committees to remind them of what the open meeting law requires. So... And then we can put that out to boards and committees with the expectation that they'd start adding detail to their agendas.
And Margaret, you have a monthly Department Head Meeting, correct?
I do, yes.
So could that kind of be like a running theme?
It could be, except that our department heads aren't subject to the open meeting law, boards and committees, so we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to do outreach through other committees.
And the one thing I would like to caution with that sort of thing is you are talking about volunteers, so you have to be very, very careful about the requests that you make, because a lot of people are already putting in time that they don't have. So you need to be careful about what you're asking.
But there's things that they're holding on.
I absolutely understand. I just want to be clear that these are volunteers that you're talking about.
I may do, we may do something like a sample agenda. You know, this is what you'll want, you might want to do. Like, the board just actually adopted Agenda Procedures not too long ago, where it actually lists the categories that would appear on the agenda. So maybe we could do a sample, just to show folks what a detailed agenda might look like.
It could be very informational. Some folks just may not know. But we also have a budget kickoff meeting coming up, where we're gonna have probably boards and committees in the evening. Am I correct?
Yes.
And perhaps we could just bring it up then.
We'll keep pushing it out there for you. Any other questions before I bring up another topic? Oh, I see a hand in the back.
Uh, we're somewhere... This is not unique to Berlin, any sense, but I see far too many house numbers and business numbers prominently posted, so you can tell what house you're at when you're driving down the street.
Too few.
Far too few.
Oh, far, yes. So far too few numbers, yes. So she's black, is that what you talked about there?
I know that the fire marshal is working with, I believe, Dave, to identify a number with a reflective background that they're gonna recommend to the community as they move forward. It's very, very important, as the chief can attest to, is like, at 2:00 in the morning with two feet of snow on the ground, to try to find a house in a hurry during a medical or fire call. It's, uh, makes very anxious if you can't find it. They're very important. It's one of those things that they look for when they do normal inspections, to make sure the proper house number is posted, invisible from the street. I know that he worked, Dave, the fire marshal worked on it very... We just talked about it, I believe it was like yesterday, he brought it up to speed on the project he was working on. So it's near and dear to my heart to have good house numbers out there. Worked for a really long time, it's an important part of public safety to do this.
Is there a warrant for one certain...
I have to be honest with you. I haven't been here enough to kind of like know your warrants yet. But usually it's like a 3- to 5-inch number, some type of script that's gotta be. And they, sometimes they go with a background on it. And just, and another important thing, if the house, it's right in the house, is contrast. If you got, sometimes people will put a really nice brass number up, but it doesn't contrast with the siding that they have. So it's like, you're gonna be able to see that, so you can get right at the door and see what's going on, whether it's a fire, an emergency, or a policeman.
Some people have thoughts of good drivers, so at least mark your male ones on three sides. Prime and both sides, when they come down the road, they can find it.
Very important.
So if there is a...
I can ask Dave that tomorrow. Like I said, I haven't been with the system long enough to have all those things memorized. So it's like, I will talk with Dave, the fire marshal. I don't know if you can help with that, or is that...
I was hoping they would do some reflective signs, put on like the parking areas, the hiking trails. There is some enforcement that I think they can do on new construction, but as far as existing, I don't know if there's any leverage to...
Being existing is very, very challenging, like Dave just said, to be existing. Sometimes, sometimes have it, let me go do some inspection, propane, throw oil over it or something like that, then you have to have your house number posted. And again, I have to admit, I'm locked up completely, I'm running every day. Something new from Dave, so it's like on the Berlin, the way they do things, so...
Thanks, Chief. So, oh, I see a couple of hands. Judy Mills, what up?
I have a very limited amount of time, I'm sorry I'm late coming here. It's been a hellish day.
Oh, she can't hear you. So Judy, I'm gonna drag this over to you, the folks in the back are doing this.
Oh, no, I'll come up there.
Oh, Judy.
Pego? Hi. I think everybody pretty much knows me from the post office. Anyway, I have a very limited amount of time, so I'm gonna bring this up, if it's okay with you. I know you have your own agendas. But I would like to discuss Old Home Day. Okay, and this has been kind of... Something that's been bothering me since it happened. Can I ask whoever has the answer, when was the decision made to bring... And who made the decision to bring the Recreation Committee down to do the food because food trucks didn't show up?
That was, the food trucks failed at the very last minute.
Very last minute, meaning a day before, two days before?
A week before.
A week before, okay. Can I ask why exceptions were made for the Recreation Department where restrictions had been placed on the Lions Club using their... They have like a trailer, their food trailer, because they needed to have hand washing abilities, they needed to have refrigeration. So they decided they couldn't fulfill all the restrictions that were put on them, so they opted out of Old Home Day because of that.
I can tell you that the Recreation Committee already served food out of the snack shop. It already does that, so there was no issue.
They did, but I could, I got you on this one. I asked them how they were refrigerating their meats and their cheese and whatever perishables they had. And they showed me that they had coolers. And that's not their fault, but why did you make an exception? Not just to the Lions Club. You know, they weren't allowed to do it. I'm sorry, I'm not voicing this very well. But why was it that the Lions Club was not allowed to do it, yet Recreation Committee was? The seniors were going to actually have a dessert with whipped cream. And we couldn't do it because we didn't have hand washing facilities, and we didn't have proper refrigeration. So why was the decision then to call the Recreation Department and not the Lions Club? Or to excuse anybody that didn't have proper refrigeration, such as the Recreation Committee? I hope I am well-understood here. If I'm not, please ask a question.
Judy, who made the decision one way or another? Who was the deciding authority?
That's...
As far as the Recreation Committee, the Recreation Committee was pulled in because they routinely serve food out of that facility, so it was our understanding that they have permission, and I mean, they do that at their games. So that was why they were called in.
But they were prepared to at that time?
That's not... I know nothing about that. What I know is the Recreation Committee was called in because they serve food out of there. It was our understanding that they have permission to serve food out of there. We do the best we can as a committee on that. We really do. And the other things are all Board of Health things. Those are not rules that we make up, or that we... We would have loved to have the Lions Club, and they were asked to fill out some paperwork that is required by the Board of Health. I cannot change the rules, nor can our committee...
But the rules were changed. The rules were changed. They were, because I saw, and I asked how these things were being refrigerated, and they showed me the coolers. So yes, they were. And did everybody use that hand washing facility? Has it got hot and cold running water? Okay, so...
Maybe it was a misunderstanding in the application process.
Judy, who said no to you? Who said no?
It was, it was a letter from Neshova Board of Health that required it. But if you're gonna make an exception, why wasn't the Lions Club called? Why weren't every, why wasn't everybody afforded that exception?
There was no intention to make an exception, Judy. There was no intention to make it.
It was a week, it was a week. Within a week, we could have gotten it together. But my thing is this. The Recreation Committee did not have any intention of selling food on that deck.
But they sell, they sell food out of there on a regular basis. They have permission to sell food out of the snack shop.
Can I just add something? Eloise, stand up, Linden Street. I think there was definitely a lack of communication, because the senior citizens found out that they couldn't, that we weren't supposed to have food with anything that needed to be refrigerated. Okay. A week before. So we get down there, so we said, "Okay, we won't do that." We get down there, and the First Parish Church is selling apple pie and chocolate pecan pies with whipped cream. And they said, "Oh, we didn't know that we couldn't do it." So it was a lack of communication.
Precisely my point.
Right.
Well, I think exactly that. Sometimes things like this come back to communication. And I think we can only try better, try better communication.
Okay, it was a faux pas, and I'm gonna say, honestly, there were people offended because of the way things were done, and how exceptions were made, whether you wanna face it or not. Maybe food can be done outside, in that facility down there by the Recreation Department. Maybe they do it often. But they were using coolers. They weren't using refrigeration as we were told. So what I'm trying to get, the point I'm trying to drive home, is that people are offended when you do these things, and that more thought and more communication ought to go into this.
You know what? People work really hard for almost a year to make this happen. And it's very hard to keep coming back to do this when everybody comes and does nothing but complain. And nobody asks, as far as your, your cell under bake sale. Bake goods fall under bake sale. But the rules change for us every year or two, and we struggle really hard to make sure that this comes off. If people are gonna spend all their time being offended, then eventually this committee's gonna walk away too.
I don't think anybody is gonna spend their time being, all their time being offended. But I think under the, under these circumstances, there was definitely cause to feel this way, because you had a week. Inside of a week, I was told by the headlining, John Sharon, that we could have gotten our act together, we could have gotten down there, and we could have done it.
Could you have done it? We tried working with the Lions, but we've tried working with the Lions for multiple years. Multiple years. And it never works out. And Kristen worked her butt off to try to work with them to get the paperwork that they needed to do.
I think, in many, you know, in many organizations, and in local government, and state government, in independent nonprofits, there are, after there is an event or an activity, there is a post-event briefing, and there are, there is after-action reports. So this is something that the committee could bring back and review after the event. And if the event continues to go on the following year, make corrections, improve communication, whatever steps are necessary to keep this moving.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. I think going forward is where we need to go. And I think that we need to communicate.
Judy, it sounds to me, my friend, like you need to do a formal written exit review and put all these points down on paper, so they have it next year to refer to. If it, nobody's gonna remember this conversation next year when the plan is taking place. But if you do an exit review now and submit all these concerns of yours, they'll have it. They can open the paper and go, "Oh, yes, remember this? This is what we need to, we need to watch out for." So that's really, that's your, that's your action plan.
I think that's a good idea. But I do wanna say, I do believe in my heart of hearts, whether you wanna hear it or not, that the Lions Club especially is owed an apology.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
All right.
Margaret, how many times do we come to you and see, is there anything that we could do for the Lions?
I'm sorry, I didn't know what I was gonna say.
We refer the Lions Club and any other food members to the Neshova Area Boards of Health.
We tried to make sure that the Lions Club could come, and it did not work out. But we did try.
I just can't speak to that. I can't speak to that. I can't speak to that because I am just this year a Lion. And I think if I had other Lions Club members here, they may take exception to what you have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy, I appreciate that. Charlene, I see your hand going up in the back. Is that you?
Uh, sorry, Ornella.
Oh, hi.
Well, I saw Charlene in my line of vision, so it came out that way.
So I just have, I have a couple of questions regarding the ongoing negotiations for the multiple post-community agreements. So I'm just wondering what kind of progress we've made. I think there's three separate ones, if I'm not mistaken. Just what kind of progress we've made so far? And if there are any plans to have a community outreach meeting before any contracts are signed?
Margaret? Chris? Margaret and I have been working with...
Could you say the multiple post-communities?
Yeah, there's, I'm referring to two marijuana cultivators and one...
One retail.
A distributed recreational.
Yes, you have to speak up.
Okay. Yes, Margaret and I have been working with individuals for these three contracts. He was talking to me. And right now, it's sort of at a standstill, I would say. What were your other questions, Ornella?
Just what kind of targets we've made? And if there are any plans to have a community outreach meeting before a finalized contract?
Am I right that it is required? No, that's the community... I don't actually need that, I don't think. Pretty loud. The community outreach meeting itself and the whole state application process is required, as you know. But I think you might be referring to a community informational session about the HCA itself.
Right, just having a meeting before the contract is finalized.
Yeah, it's all gonna be part of the public process because it's the board that would actually execute that contract. And I don't, I hadn't thought too much about actually having an informational session as part of it. I don't see any reason why the board couldn't do that. So, but as Chris said, things are moving very, very slowly. We're working with, our town council is very, very good in this area. And she's advising to proceed very slowly and carefully, which is what we're doing, which is why things are moving so at a snail's pace. But I don't see why the board couldn't incorporate an informational session as part of that.
So Margaret, I'm gonna toss it back to you. And you know that we have, or had, three open positions. One for fire chief, one for treasurer, tax collector, treasurer, and then our building commissioner. So if you could just give a brief update on where we are with that and let the folks know, that'd be awesome.
For anyone who's been in my office, you see a whiteboard behind me. And that whiteboard very rarely changes. But I've been able to actually erase something from that. And that is the hire of the building commissioner. So we went through a building commissioner search and selection process recently. We interviewed, there was a preliminary interview panel of some local representatives and someone who has expertise in this area from outside the town. And narrowed it down to a couple of candidates to bring before the board at an open meeting. The board unanimously voted to offer the position to Richard Hanks, who is the, who's been the interim building commissioner now since March of this year. If you don't know Richard already, he is very, he's extremely good to deal with. He's got a very even temperament. He's thorough. And so I think the board was very pleased with his decision. So the tentative start date for Richard as the full-time building commissioner in town is going to be November 12th. The next position that's been advertised, we've got three. The next one is the treasurer-collector. Resume is closed for that a couple of weeks, a little over a week ago, a couple of weeks ago. A preliminary interview panel has been set up. People serving on the interview panel include the town clerk, Eloise Salz, June Holland, the accountant, Molly Reed, our assessor. And we have two certified treasurer collectors from other municipalities in the state. They're gonna be serving on that. We received, I'm now getting my number of applications mixed up. We, I'm not even gonna guess at the number, but based on resume we review, we've narrowed the number of candidates that are gonna be going through preliminary interviews to five. And from those five, not more than three would be brought to the board for final interviews. And then finally, fire chief search. You may have all met Chief Clark, who's been our interim chief. Chief Clark was the fire chief in Hawkinson and been in Hawkinson for over forty, about forty, over forty years. And he was gracious enough to come and be our interim chief during this period. He has a contract currently until November 30th. We did, we have been going through a search and selection process. And we're actually using the recruiter that was used for an earlier search and selection process. But this time, we're using this recruiter. It's Municipal Resources Incorporated. They specialize in public safety recruitments, among other things. And they are actually working with us or partnering with us on this search for no charge. So we're actually doing a cooperative search and selection process. The field of eleven candidates based on resume reviews has already been narrowed to five. So next week, we anticipate moving on to telephone interviews and then finishing that process. So the hope and expectation is that a new chief or a permanent chief would be on board in December.
Yay.
I know, yay. Things are moving in a shaken.
That's a lot.
What else is on your mind before I go through a few other items on my list? Oh, come on. I hear it at the dump when I'm there on a Saturday. Pretend this is the dump.
South Berlin is worried about our new city.
Worried traffic, worried trash, worried population?
Everything. We're going from a village to a city.
Density, yeah, the density there.
Yeah, there's gonna suddenly be an awful lot of people that when they discover that it's safe to go outside, they're gonna be all over the place. Like, it's gonna not be a little village anymore.
I don't know if Chief is around. Oh, I see him. There's Chief. There he is, I see a hand in the back. Chief, is there anything that you can share on, you know, your thoughts, processes, plans for the River Bridge apartments?
We'll see. It's gonna be very different. It's very hard to tell what it's gonna be yet. I'm gonna judge by the rents that it's gonna be, hopefully, not that many problems for us, but you never know. But you're right, it's changing the area. You're looking at 205 apartments going in. So if we put two people in each one, over 400 people, more than a 10% increase in our population seemingly overnight. It's gonna change the type of calls that we respond to because we're gonna have people living on top of each other and different things. And there absolutely is gonna be more people around. I really don't know what the future holds. You know, we added officers over the past few years to kind of be prepared for this. But a lot of it's gonna be wait and see. It's hard to plan for this, you know. In reality, when you look at the grand scheme, I think it's 400 people. But then you look at the number of 10% of a community's population, that's, it puts it in a different perspective. So, you know, we're gonna be aware, we're gonna kind of watch, we're gonna track things and be available to respond. But I don't know how it's gonna affect, you know, I mean, you're a really close brother. I don't know how it's gonna affect your quality of life and more people around. My hope is that where it's, in reality, it's only 400 and we have five, six, a thousand people in Bellows on a busy Saturday, it won't be that big of a deal to us. And I guess that's my positive thinking, trying to work through it, that we're gonna be okay.
Well, I certainly have friends in Gates Pond who had a lot of advanced concerns. And Gates Pond Road, you know, and it's not as bad as maybe they, it's not great, there's a lot of traffic. But it's not as bad as they were horrified to...
And I think one thing that's unfortunate is, I kind of, I try to explain this, people want to talk to them a lot. If we were to not build and not expand in this community at all, never add another house, we are still gonna have a major traffic problem because of the development that's going on on all sides of us and beyond. The commute traffic is gonna continue to increase and it's gonna be a dilemma and something that we have to respond to. You know, and hopefully, as we started to talk about with the traffic planning in the beginning, we're starting to plan that and start to get the next five years out and 10 years out and how we're gonna handle those things. You know, we just have to be more forward thinking. As we start to see problems, we need to respond to what that immediate problem is and try and foresee what the next problem is gonna be and try and get ahead of it.
Can I throw out a sidewalk suggestion? That the sidewalk planning include forethought about the fact that 400 people are gonna leave those buildings? Don't just think about, you know, sidewalks in this triangle. Maybe connect the sidewalks at this end with that end or something.
When we kind of started to think about, and to go back to the complete street projects and when Tim and I first started to talk about it and Keith, a lot of what we thought about was Northbrook Village. And we thought about how could we get people safely from Northbrook Village to River Bridge if there were gonna be more stores, restaurants at River Bridge? Possibly to Highland Commons, possibly to the center of town. So we were looking broader to try and tie in all the areas of town to make it pedestrian-friendly. So that's all been, it really wasn't...
Which is not.
Right, it really wasn't a localized, it was localized based on projects. But how in the end, all those projects over time will tie into?
Would be connected, of course.
And we're fortunate, we have Central Mass Regional Planning working very closely with us on that. And they know that that's important. We talked about a buzzword yesterday when we had a meeting on the, is connectivity. And that's really what it's all about. So then when we take the safe routes to school and that funding that's available and it's, you know, it's connecting different things and making things pedestrian-friendly so that we don't have a line of cars we have at the elementary school now picking up kids. Kids can actually ride their bikes to school, they can walk to school. We don't have a lot of that here.
Right. Speaking of connectivity, it occurred to me a long time ago, and I keep telling people, that Massachusetts needs a Mass Pike on-off ramp just west of Worcester on Route 56 to relieve the pressure on all the communities on this side of the city for development. Because Spencer's still in the 19th century. They thought the whole bunch of communities west of Worcester, they can't join the Commonwealth.
You're absolutely right. They're like islands. I spent over three years in Rottling.
Oh, yeah. You can't get there from here.
It's a catch-22, and I think we see that here. I think if we sat in a meeting in a town like that and said, hey, we're putting a ramp off of the Mass Pike. Everyone's coming to town now? We'd hear an outcry. So it's about, it's definitely, it's everywhere.
What's up, Charlene?
So this actually relates a bit in terms of thinking about the fact that lots of changes are happening, some of which are much larger than Berlin, much larger than Massachusetts. And there are things that involve Berlin and Massachusetts and the nation in the world, which is that there is going to be a workshop presentation on Thursday, November 7th in the evening, I believe at 7 o'clock, at 1870 Town Hall, hosted by the Berlin Public Library. Sierra Club is going to give a presentation on climate and climate advocacy. Because to think about, you know, this is a matter of traffic and roads. We have a climate crisis. We have a climate emergency. So I warmly invite everybody to check that out. I'll put something up on Facebook about it. We just arranged this. We've been trying, we've been talking to Sierra Club. We're trying to talk to Sierra Club for months. But we finally have this date. And there'll be a kind of climate 101 and, you know, things that you can do locally. So, and it's free and open to the public.
Are you posting it in the item?
Time?
Time, I believe it is, so Thursday, November 7th, 7:00 PM, 1870. I think it's the main hall upstairs.
Are you posting it in the item? And the bulletin board?
You can talk about anything you want.
So tied directly to the issue of climate change, the state has created a program called Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. And there are many communities are now working to become, we call it MVP, that's the acronym, MVP Designated Communities. And what this means is that a core group, well, the town itself recognizes the issue of climate change and that a core group of people leads the greater community in coming up with a plan to address climate change locally. So the community then identifies areas of concern that would relate to climate change, whether it be related to climate change, related to agriculture, related to roads, bridges, culverts, and other things. This is something that's gonna be coming up. And this is going to be a broad community program. So we have started with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on the initial steps of becoming MVP-designated. Once we have a plan, they're gonna work with us through a plan. And I don't know if Chief and Dave know this yet, but they're on the core team.
In other words, you... Besides Brenda's word, the key word of the day is voluntold.
So this is the team that's gonna be able to reach out to the broader community to get involvement and identify issues related to a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan. It's a resiliency plan. Once we have a plan in place, there's actually funding involved that we could apply to some local projects related to climate change. So this is just another, just another thing that doesn't happen overnight, but it's another thing that we can work toward to avail ourselves of some state funding to do things in our community. I know, I don't know, Dave might be able to address the culvert issue in town and what we might be doing moving forward. But culverts would be one of those at-risk areas. So we're working on that. So I'm glad you, Charlene, I'm glad you brought up the issue of climate change. So thank you very much.
Does it include bug control? Because I'm getting sick of all these ticks and mosquitoes. Have to kill you.
Absolutely, it could, absolutely. So those, these are the things that we identify. So we're gonna be moving forward to the, there's gonna be, again, a broad community. There's gonna be a full-day community workshop. We'll break into different groups and we'll just come up with ideas and create a plan from that. So, yeah, everything from bugs to culverts to pharma.
Speaking of bugs, I saw something on his book this morning about continued concern about Triple E. What's going on with Triple E?
It's, we haven't had a hard frost yet, so...
So the mosquitoes are still up there?
Yeah. So that's why Mary pushed it on the town of Berlin and then I snag it and push it over to her own neighbors' connect. I mean, just so that...
I didn't have a chance to really read it.
Yeah, I mean, so it's just be alert, it's just be safe. I mean, there's been a few cold nights. I know I'm one of those who's already turned the heat on, I'll readily admit it.
Me too.
So, but it's not cold enough yet. So just be vigilant. And soon the clocks will be going back, straight forward, fall back in a couple of weeks. So it'll be dark by four, so no one's gonna go out of their house anyways.
I think we still have the link to the State DPH site on our website.
Yeah, really, do we push it to five o'clock? There you go. Is there, oh, I see another, yes, he's back.
This is probably part of the overall project, the sidewalks and street improvements and intersections and likes and so forth. But my understanding, most of the River Bridges can see, a lot has changed since the original concept. But certainly a strong part of it was, the road between there and 290 is gonna be widened, the bridge is gonna be widened. I'm thinking if you have 205 apartments all entering that traffic stream through the roundabout, that's gonna be one cook-a-ma roundabout. But then how do they go from there to 290 without getting bobbled up? In other words, is the widening of the road and the widening of the bridge a project that's going to happen or not?
That was part of this project in one of the reiterations of the River Bridge agreement. They were, it was in one of the projects, they were kind of giving us stay on. What the deadline is and when it's to be done, I'm not sure. It's also the inter- It's also the intersection itself, but the post office is also supposed to be redesigned as part of that. So there's, there's some other projects still because of River Bridge that need to happen. And some that went into pedestrian safety because that was part of widening that bridge as well. Where it actually stands, I don't know. I mean, Margaret and I were talking about the River Bridge Agreement last day.
I had, Phil Tomassino actually went through the contract to, or the agreement to look at the different things that were still outstanding. And at some point, Margaret will sit down with the appropriate parties and-
There are certain things in that agreement that are going to trigger various projects. And it's not just the road widening, it's not just the bridge work. There are supposed to also be some traffic signals that are put in that area and other things. And not to mention, the mitigation funding is going to be triggered by, I believe, certificates of occupancy in the not-too-distant future. So there's, there's a lot that's going to be happening with this, with this project.
So one thing that we talked about at our last selectmen meeting was the CPA, the Conservation Preservation Act. I got that right? Thank you. That thing, CPA. So Margaret had put some information up on the town website. I can't remember if I pushed it to Berlin Neighbors Connect. But there'll be some information showing up in your tax bills.
Tax bill.
Which I think are coming out by the end of the month.
It's getting closer.
It's getting close. It's getting closer.
For your tax bill. So if there's any information that you need, there's links and resources that you'll have, but I don't know if you want to give like a Reader's Digest version of it?
First of all, tax bills probably won't be out until closer to the mid, closer to mid-November. So first, within the first couple of weeks of November. I think that's more realistically what we're looking at. Community Preservation Act. So the town, I'll give just a brief synopsis of the, of the adoption of the act. So the town actually voted the act at, you'll get a summary in your tax bills, but the-
Tax bill.
The town, I think voted the act in 20, I want to say 2017 or early, the spring of 2018. It then appeared on the fall 2018, or wrong, or am I?
It's 2017.
Anyway, yeah, it doesn't matter. But the town has voted to adopt the statutes governing the Community Preservation Act. This puts a 3% surcharge on residential and commercial and industrial properties after a $100,000 exemption on the value. So after the first $100,000 of value of each property, then the 3% surcharge applies. The insert that's going to come with the tax bills is going to include a chart where you could actually kind of determine what the 3% would be. But you're going to see the 3% surcharge on the fall tax bills. One thing that might not be really, really clear in the insert is that the surcharge, I believe, is only going to be on your actual tax bills. One tax bill a year, not both. I believe it's the actual tax bills in the fall that the 3% is going to apply to. Now, the Community Preservation Act surcharge is going to actually fund a community preservation fund, which has been set up by our accountant, to fund various qualified projects related to historic preservation, land preservation, conservation, recreation, and community housing. So those are the critical areas that this money could be applied to. Once the bylaw that was recently adopted by town meeting was adopted this past spring, establishing a community preservation committee is approved by the Attorney General. A few key town boards and committees, I believe it's Planning, Historical Commission, Conservation Commission, and a couple of others. That community preservation committee is going to be responsible for developing procedures that will vet projects that could be proposed by anyone under the guidelines of the Community Preservation Act. So that's all coming. It's not in place yet. The surcharges that are going to be paid on these tax bills are going to be put into the community preservation fund and kept there, not spent until the community preservation committee develops its procedures for vetting projects under the Community Preservation Act.
Mark, there's matching funds that come from the state.
You're right. Thank you for bringing that up, yes. The matching funds that come from the state are derived from registry of deeds fees on real estate transactions. And so those were, those transaction fees were established by the legislature to be able to provide matches to communities that adopted the Community Preservation Act. The idea at the state, and a lot of us know how this works, the idea at the state was to fund a 100% match to the communities that have adopted the 3% surcharge. While that has held true in some years, in some years that has slipped. So we can't guarantee that the state's going to provide a dollar-for-dollar match to the monies we're putting in the community preservation fund, but the state will be contributing some match to supplement our monies in the community preservation fund to allow the town to do eligible projects in Berlin.
I think you did awesome.
Pretty good.
Anything else? Oh, Mr. Hoffman.
Ms.?
Mr. Hoffman, ready to work. You will.
Raise your hand if you're on Berlin Connect, the Facebook page. So it's about half. And what percentage of you think that I should unlock it and let people post what they want and do the free speech thing? I guess most of you know that I, that I moderate it. What percentage of you, if you think it should be unlocked and just people should post as they wish?
Sure, why not?
I have a question. I gotta admit, some of the cattiness is pretty amusing.
What would your question be?
How else are you going to get your PhilaTruck?
What do you mean unlock?
Well, every post is reviewed by a moderator, which is me. So if it's inappropriate, for example, there was one yesterday or today that was inappropriate, it wasn't Berlin-centric, it was somebody giving their opinion about some subject that had nothing to do with Berlin. So I declined to post it. Because it's supposed to be Berlin-centric, otherwise it sort of defeats the purpose.
Peter, I think that you could look at what you want the mission of your page to be and make your choices based on that. You know, it's really about the mission of the page. And if it's just for announcements-
The mission's there.
Okay, then, then we should be able to-
Do I want the people to honor it on their own? Or do I want to, do the folks want people to have anyone continue to review them?
Well, I would just like to inform everybody, in case you don't know, that Peter inherited this job. He didn't choose it. He took it on nobly to take this, you know, collection of standards that were given to him and he chose to carry the torch, which is wonderful of you. I, I have tried a couple of times to post things that I thought Berlin people would be interested in that didn't actually take place in Berlin or weren't, you know, I thought they were interesting to Berlin, to me, so maybe they'd be interesting to my neighbors. But Peter said, this is not a Berlin thing, so I'm not posting this. And you and I have gone back and forth with this sort of thing. If you are happy with having a level of, let's say, let's say a gate that people have to go through before they can put stuff on there and you like that, I would offer you Berlin Residents United as an alternate Berlin Facebook page where you can come on and say whatever you like.
So what Brenda's saying, she's created, she and some others have created an alternate page.
There's another page I didn't create. I just participate in both. So Berlin Residents United is your free speech alternative to Berlin as Neighbors Connect, which is, which is monitored.
So the downside to moderating is if I don't get to a time sensitive post timely-
Yeah.
Nobody knows about it. If there's an accident and I happen to not look at the page for a couple of hours, it's irrelevant.
Just go back to another page, I'd just like to point out, that is not the official site for town news. If you really want to find out about town things, you need to like Town of Berlin, you need to like the police page, you need to like the highway page. Berlin Neighbors Connect is not the official avenue for town information. That needs to be really, really clear. Even though Paige pushes stuff out, you're not going to get everything and it's not the official way to get it.
You know, and regardless if it's Berlin-
Residents United.
Thank you. Or Berlin Neighbors Connect. Just remember, in a world where you can be anything, be kind.
Absolutely.
Here, here.
Here, here.
And a member of groups and a member of Hudson. Basically, it's unlimited, people can post, but then it is still moderated. And based on how the posts go, what happens, the moderator will then take the gap to eliminate the problems and problems arise. So that takes some of the pressure off of you to have to immediately approve posts, but then also, you know, lets the information be out there. But then if there's a problem, people can supply feedback and then you can still moderate what is on the site.
Yeah, some people know I'm a beekeeper and I'm on the Worcester County Beekeepers page and no, nothing's moderated. So, you know, but I would like to hear what the will of this room is. Most people want-
I would say on the Hudson site, they're very, they tell you when things have been taken down and it doesn't happen very often. For most, like you said, people are nice, people enjoy, it works out pretty well.
Hang on, Keith. Keith, who's hiding in the corner.
I'm now hiding back here. So, you know, I'm part of the groups as well.
I'm sorry.
Keith, since you asked. So the problem is when you have one person that's moderator, then everything's subjective and you get into the position of censorship. So sometimes a good solution might be to have several moderators, which will help, you know, get things posted quickly as well. So that might be another option.
I mean, that's a valid point.
So pretty much if anyone's interested, contact Peter Hoffman. Randall Road, tax bill. Judy?
I am one that doesn't subscribe to a lot of anger being shown and bullying techniques that a lot of times can be shown on these pages. So I prefer to keep it nice and somewhat censored and have a moderator. Because quite frankly, I think we have enough anger issues in this country and there's so much garbage coming out, we don't need to read it and we don't need to subscribe to it. So you want my opinion, I think you ought to closely watch it.
I mean, Peter, your call if you want to advertise to anybody else. Back to Keith's suggestion, somebody else can step up so if you're not available, so they can't say, you know, Peter doesn't like me, therefore he's not going to post it. You know, Peter only likes so-and-so, so he's going to post it. So, you know, let's just get, you know, let's just follow what it is, you know, so let's just get, get that out of the way.
You know, I think when the, when the page started, when I first joined it, I don't know how quickly I joined it after it started, but I think it was, it was kind of more the way that Chief described it, that if everything got posted and then if it got contentious, it would, the post would be deleted. You know, this is, this is, okay, we've talked about this enough, end of discussion, and it was gone. That, that was kind of how it was handled for quite a while. And then it got a little more censor-like. I don't know why. I was just, you know, I was a-
But isn't that really the venue for this?
Yeah, this is true.
I would suggest that you put it on your page and request and give people feedback that way.
Yeah. Put it over your meeting and talk about things.
Peter, what?
This is very much a bad thing. This is a chat session about town issues. This is a town issue.
But most of your people who are on Neighbors Connect are not in this room. In fact, a lot of the people are not on Facebook or not on the page at all, so.
That's true.
All right, I got the page active.
We love you. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Well, it's 8:30. Not seen a lot of hands go up, so on behalf of the ladies on stage, thank you for coffee talk.
4.0.
Soon to be 5.0 sometime in the fall. Keep reaching out to us, I'll look at, Brenna's all colored. Thanks to Mary who brought in the coloring pages for that. So thank you for your participation. Keep in touch with us and thanks, Mr. Beal. We're done.